All right, well, good evening, everyone. It is 7:04, and I hereby call to order the May 2019 meeting of the Village Tivoli Board of Trustees. Would you please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance to our flag? It's just over here.
Okay, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We are very pleased tonight to have some guests from the Red Hook Central School District and our fabulous local libraries. So, we're going to get into all our regular village business afterwards, but welcome. And if you maybe care to stand here.
Stand over there, and I'll just stand in case you didn't get one. Could be worse, could be worse some, someday. So, thanks for that, once again.
You're welcome.
Went into the budget cycle with three things in mind.
Stay under. If you wouldn't like, introducing yourself.
And, yup, and Bruce Martin, Business Official.
I forget to do that, we've been around so long now.
There are still people who don't know who you are.
Thanks for the prompt. So, went into the budget cycle with really three things in mind. Number one, to stay under the tax cap. Number two, to maintain existing programs and opportunities for kids. And number three, to try to leave a little wiggle room for some of the things that we want to get done, like reallocating funds, to go after some things that are new and exciting. So, I would think we achieved that with this budget. It was an interesting budget year. Not when Bruce and I have been saying that it was relatively quiet budget year. We started the cycle as we normally do, looking at a projected deficit of about $1 million, give or take. And, you know, we had our standard sort of 8% assumption on health insurance and that sort of thing. And health insurance came in lower than that. TRS came in lower than we expected. We had six faculty retirements, three, three, four seasoned support staff retirements. We were less than breakage there. Very little bit of state aid. And it just came together, and we were really happy about that. And also, it's looking like we'll be able to cut a couple of sections out of the elementary school, 1 to 2. And we're going to use that money, redeploy that money, to go after some of the things we're thinking about having. For example, the elementary principals have been asking for a long time for an elementary school counselor and some additional social work support. So, we would look to do some of that. I've got my, it does, what, there's a list, like 20 things, odds and ends. My winter track team has been on my, our agenda for a while. Getting back into the business, some business courses at the high school, looking at computer science courses at the high school, this sort of thing. So, that's what we do if the budget, if the budget passes. We think we have a little bit of wiggle room in there. The budget did a weird thing this year, and I'm going to let Bruce explain it. And we'll have a little quiz at the end, because it's a complicated thing to understand. Our expenditure budget went down, but our tax load still went up. It's under the cap at 2.61%, but the expenditure budget went down. I think it was 1.13%. So, maybe you wanted to talk a little bit about that, because that's counterintuitive. You look at it, and you go, wait, how'd that, how's that work?
Right, so, so we'd like to be able to make a lot of fanfare about that and say, you know, we found some magic somewhere, but that really wasn't the case. What happened was, 20 years ago, the district did a major building project. And to do that building project, we took on some significant debt, about $29 million worth of debt. And in June, next month, we will make the final payment on that debt. So, June of 2019, we will make the final principal and interest payment on that debt. When, when the district does building projects, it is heavily aided by what's called New York State Education Department Building Aid. So, as we go from 1819 into 1920, about, on the expenditure side, about $2 million of debt will fall off, one line. Everything else in the budget's doing its same old usual thing. But that one line, $2 million will, will go away. And just on about, just under $1.9 million on the revenue side will also go away. So, that accounts, that, that single line on the expenditure side and on the revenue side is enough to bring the bottom line of the whole budget actually negative, even though, as Paul talked about, there's all this stuff that's always going on. There's salaries and benefits and health insurance and special ed and fuel and, you know, all the things that happen every day in the district. That's still all going on in those other 499 or some odd budget codes. And that's the portion of the budget that is about 65% supported by local tax levy and about 35% supported by the balance of state aid, the non-building aids kind of state aid. And it's not quite 35, 65, because there's a little bit of miscellaneous revenue in there. But, but really, big decrease in debt service. All, almost all of that funded by building aid. It goes away, bottom line of the budget drops. But everything else is moving along as it, as it normally would.
So, we have a very busy ballot this year. Just want to make everyone aware of that. So, we have, we have six propositions. First one is the operating budget. The second one is the regular, we call it our standard school bus replacement cycle proposition. It's an amount of $330,000 that, we've got both libraries on the ballot. Every two years, we have to have a vote on the non-voting student board member. I would like to make a plug for that, because I really do think it's a valuable voice at the, at the table to have a high school student or two sit there and, and share perspective with us. And then Proposition 6, we want to spend a little bit of time talking about the solar project that's happening in Red Hook. We've been working, Bruce and I, with our facilities director, off and on for, I want to say it's between two and three years, looking at solar. Because, you know, people would come to us and say, you guys really should get into solar. And we have people show up and say, we've got a deal for you. And every time we went into it and we started to look at the underlying assumptions that were there, we'd say, this isn't really a deal for us. At the end of the day, it's too much of a risk financially. And then in walked NAIPA and Solar Liberty, and we had some support from two local, two local parents, Ben Hohn and Ross Cool. I don't know if they know, know them, but they're, they're experts in this field. And they were able to help us sort of go through it and check some of the underlying assumptions. And we, we thought, boy, if we can get state aid on this project, we can make it happen. It'd be really a positive thing for Red Hook, positive cash flow right out of the gate. We had a lot of conversations with SED along the way. They led us to believe, you know, it's going to be aided, blah, blah, blah. As Bruce says, it ebbed and flowed a little bit along the way, because it was a new thing for them, this, this idea of a standalone capital project, a solar project. For us, it's huge. It's all three buildings, over 2,000 solar panels. Really exciting, right? And great for the environment and a lot of opportunities for kids to, to learn about clean energy. We're sort of at a spot with the State Education Department where they're telling us, well, we have to check with our legal counsel, because we're not sure we have the authority to aid this. I'm still cautiously optimistic that we'll get there. But we want to be really clear with everyone that we need a yes vote to make it happen to begin with. But if the State Education Department comes back and, and they say, no way, we're not giving any aid on this, we're going to put a hole, put a hole on it until we can convince them that it's the right thing to do. So, we want to be really transparent with folks about that.
Right.
Okay. The other thing I want to mention is, on June 18th, we have a special vote to accept and apply some additional grant funding and a donation for the auditorium project. It's another $500,000 from Selwyn and Cahill in the state and $100,000 from Red Hook Education Foundation. So, it's a special vote. You have to have it to accept the money and apply it to the project. We were hoping to get it on this ballot, but we missed that, that timeline, so.
The only thing left, I think, that we didn't mention is, if, if you hurry, there's still time to register to vote if you're not registered. That closes at 9 o'clock tonight. It's at Mill Road Elementary School, on the 3-5, on the 3-5 side in the lobby. And the budget vote itself is next Tuesday, May 21st, and that goes from noon to 9:00. And that is in the Mill Road 3-5 school. And it's in the cafeteria. And the thing we always forget is there is a board election. There's a board election on the ballot. Maybe the reason that we forget it is because there are two seats, there are two incumbents. They're running for those two seats, so it's essentially uncontested. And that is also on the ballot. Johanna Moore, her term is up, and Maggie Rothwell's term is up. And they are both running for, to, to, to go for another three years in those two vacancies.
Well, we definitely know what it means to those people to have a turnout in an uncontested election, because we are often faced with that same thing. And it does mean a lot to have a turnout, even if there's no opponent.
Yeah.
For sure. Well, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it very much. Any questions?
Okay. We're always available if you think of something between now and next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
So. You didn't introduce me.
Oh.
So, I haven't, I don't know.
Sorry.
I'm going to just turn in here.
Sure.
So, standing to be support. There we go. Thank you very much. So, Mary Lisa Blondall, and I'm the president of the Red Hook Public Library Board. And this is Jill Hall, another of our trustees. And thank you so much for letting us come. Thank you all for listening to our little spiel. So, I take my piece, my lessons from Bruce here, who's the expert. So, I'm going to just tell you about the money that we are looking to get. We are going to tell you a little bit about what we've done in the last year. And then the reasons why we really feel we need this type of an increase. So, so we are asking for a 4.5% increase in our budget. And it is above the tax cap. We were allowed on our tax cap to have 2.26, but we're looking for 4.4, 4.5. And what that will amount to is about $3.25 per average household. And it'll provide us with approximately like $16,400. And your assessment for the 2.59, which is through the school, will be for just the Red Hook Public Library, it will go from $36 for your average household, $36.35 to $39.60. So, this is what we're looking for. Now, why are we looking for this? So, this is what has happened in just the last year at the Red Hook Public Library. So, we recorded last year like 85,000 plus visits to the library. We are a very active place. That, that equates to about 400 people, like each month, walking through our door. Our total circulation last year was about 75,000 plus items. So, what a great community. We like to learn, you know? Our juvenile circulation, which we're very proud of, was also up 17%. So, it's upwards in the order of like 30,000. And some of that is because of the collaboration with the school district. But, but our juvenile circulation rivals like Wapinners. So, isn't that like a great thing? So, our programming is a response to what the community is looking for. So, we've been asked to present more for teens, for adults, and for seniors, all of which we're doing. And we're also opening up our Saturdays. So, we're programming more on Saturdays. We're using all three levels on Saturdays, which requires more staff. We had 12,000 plus people attend 778 programs last year. And our demand for technology is going up. Public computer use is up, and Wi-Fi use is up. And as, for all communities, all communities across the country, libraries represent the place where they have access to computers, they have access to internet, which is the way our lives really run. If you want to get a job, if you want to communicate with people, fill out resumes, etc. So, we provide that. Last year, we opened up a teen room, so that from like middle school, high school, the kids can walk to the library and they have their own space. Now, some of that was provided by donations from patrons who gave us some money to buy some things. And the staff jumped in and did some painting and everything. So, they have their own dedicated space. And so, that's a very big thing for us. We do a lot of collaboration with the school district, through the elementary school, through the high school. And we serve our seniors with homebound delivery. We give them assistance with talking books in Braille. The Braille library, tech support, and afternoon programming. Now, we also go and look for grants. So, last year, we wrote and received $53,000 in grants. And a lot of that does get dedicated to our programming. And so, so it's not like we're just looking for the tax levy to support everything. We really do our best to look for grants. And we have a very, very generous community, and a lot of these grants are from like local foundations. So, why, why do we need this money? So, we want to continue providing all of that programming, resources, equipment, and the highest quality of all of those. As everybody knows, the state has mandated an increase in the minimum wage. And that, we are going to take our two years out, and we're approaching, meeting those standards. But it also changes our profile of our pay scale. So, we really need to address that as well. We are always, we have a schedule for increasing our technology and replacing technology. So, that's another thing that's always in there. The other thing is, like, we have a building that we have to do snow removal and upkeep and heating and toilet paper and the, you know, the elevator needs repair. So, we have all of these, these things that are constantly also rising. One of the other things that we will have facing next year is that for the last 10 or 12 years, we've had a bookkeeper of the most amazing quality. And that bookkeeper did all of our payroll, all of our bills, all of our monthly reports, did all our forms that had to go and be submitted to the state, all our filings, all for nothing, for 10 years. 10 years.
15.
15, I'm sorry. Okay? And so, we, all good things sometimes come to an end. And so, we are in the process of, we need to hire a bookkeeper. We have, in those 15 years, we went from like our little mom and pop like library, open every few odd hours, to, you know, we're, we're a very active place. And we have, we, we have to be very transparent in our use of our finances and how they are posted. If you want to see our budget, our budget is up online. It's been up online for, you know, for years. You can go back and look through the years. So, we need that as well. So, so we do, we do believe that we take your good, hard-earned dollar and turn it and maximize it. And that's what libraries do. And that's, and we are, that's what we do. And that's why we should all like be out there supporting those libraries. So, if anybody has any questions?
Thank you.
Yes?
You said you're going above the tax cap.
We are.
My understanding is the reason that municipalities and other entities have avoided, school districts have avoided going above the tax cap is that if they go above it, their property owners lose their star exemption. Well, how does you going above the tax cap affect the star exemption?
It, it won't, no one will lose their star exemption, because we're going over the tax cap.
And we have exceeded tax cap in prior years, and there has been no effect. It's because of the way we're organized in the municipality. We're only a small element, and it's such a small element that it does not impact.
So, it's considered de minimis?
Yeah, it's just like, it's such a small number that, that it would, no one, you wouldn't even.
It's important to understand that, because if it's, even though it's de minimis, if it tips the scale for the whole star exemption, it becomes large.
Right, yeah. Yeah, so, so for us, like, that amount of money is like, like, is a, is a, is a big ask. For us, it's very big ask. I mean, like, in, in regards to the other budgets that are out there. I mean, it's like, we're small, and, but yet nevertheless.
It's the tail wagging that, that.
Yeah, right, that's right.
So, in terms of, let's just put it in a frame of reference. The 4.5% is $16,400, and like a bus cost more than that. Our audit that we just had conducted, because we are open and transparent, cost $8,000 for one audit. So, in terms of reference, we have attempted as much as possible to stay at or under. We do have a calculator. If we exceed the tax cap in one year, that makes us in a negative position for the following year. So, we have to take that into account.
Right.
It all balances out. We put a lot of hard thought into this. And I'm sure the next library will talk to you about, you know. We, we pay for healthcare for two of our employees. We pay 75% of their healthcare. That's always something that we want to do. We have three full-time staff, so that we can meet the objective. I'm going to put the priorities that the school district put in in just a little bit reverse order. Our first priority wasn't to stay under the tax cap. Our first priority is to make sure that we reach the residents and our patrons and provide lifelong learning from the middle, you know, as soon as they're out of the, you know, we have Petit Picasso, we have Rom and Play, all the way up to our adults and then our, our disabled adults, our learning-challenged adults, adults that can't even come in. We provide that. We gave over 1,300, almost 1,400 books. We just gave them away last summer at different pop-ups, so that people who live in and around our community have the ability to learn and to be part of our community. So, I hope that that all helps offset us exceeding the cap.
I have no doubt that you're doing it for a good purpose. Just wanted to clarify.
No, that's a great question to ask. It is very complex in understanding, you know, where the money's going and all of those things. So, I appreciate the question.
If you're not following Red Hook Library, Red Hook Library on Instagram, we have this great thing where from time to time, we put together all the materials where the family or a bunch of borrowers or patrons borrow for the year. We've had people exceed $20,000 in material in a year. Comparing that to what we're asking for is about $85 per household in this coming budget. That shows the value of every dollar is more than amplified from what we put out in materials. I appreciate your question, but I do know from experience, we have exceeded before, and it has had no result.
Yeah. So, thank you so much. Is there, no, if, if any questions, any further, no comments, no? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, yeah, thank you.
Three else in the front row has had multiple occasions where they've been able to get. I'm never sure they make it all the way through the craft, so I'm glad.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Erica Kane. I'm the outgoing president for the Tivoli Free Library, joined by our incoming president, Alexa, our library director, Michelle. Robyn's here too, wearing two hats. Yeah, we've come all the way from the downstairs. However, we haven't been in front of you guys in five years. So, we have not asked for a budget increase in five years. You may remember, five years ago, when we came in under our previous president, we asked for a fairly substantial increase at that point, largely so we could finish the renovation of the East Room downstairs, which is done. If any of you haven't seen it yet, we invite you to please come and check out the new cool flex space downstairs, which essentially doubled the square footage of the library. We were able to move our teen literature collection and our audiobooks over there, which freed up some space in the West Room, in the original half of the library, where we were able to rearrange the bookshelves and the circulation desk and improve the flow down there, add some nice seating areas. We also put that increase in our funding into upgrading and replacing our technology. So, all of our desktops have been replaced, our laptops have been replaced. We've upgraded some of our technology, including our Wi-Fi access for our patrons. And at the time, when we came in five years ago, we said that that budget increase was going to get us through five years, which by the skin of our teeth, it has done. And we're at the point where we're really at the top end of that. And so, we're asking for a 2% increase, just to stay right where that tax cap number is. There's a little variation in that 2% or inflation affected. And we didn't figure out the 2.63 or whatever it was this year. We just went with 2%. So, we're asking for $1,600. That's an increase of about $0.63 for the year for a household assessed at $250,000. Most of that is going to help us keep ahead of salary costs, of rising salary costs. A large portion of that will be healthcare. We do make a contribution for our full-time staff who choose to participate in the healthcare system. And I'm sure, as everybody is well aware, the costs of healthcare are very unpredictable. And you get changes in healthcare rates halfway through the year, where you've had to build in a cushion into your budget that may or may not turn out to have been enough. We have had a couple of years where we had to go back and amend our budget halfway through the year after those rate changes go into effect. So, we'd like to not have to do that anymore. The other part of that, as Red Hook talked about, is the rising minimum wage rate in New York State. The Tivoli Library Board has made a real effort for the past few years, at least as long as I've been on the board, to focus on as much as possible paying a living wage for our staff. We have great staff. We want them to stay, and they're really what makes the library work. So, not only, not just paying them at minimum wage, but trying to make as much of a demonstration as we can of our, their value to the library. And then with a rising minimum wage, you end up with this compression issue where people, senior staff, who've been with us four, five, six, seven years, are now seeing new incoming high school kids that are coming on board for the summer, hired at the same thing that it took them three or four years to get to, and hired at a dollar or two less than what they're making. So, as the minimum wage goes up, we're also trying to also keep our senior staff above that, so that they're not right on the same level with very junior new staff. Red Hook calls them pages. I think we should start doing that. I like that term. I learned that during this whole process.
Pageant or in high school.
Yeah. I like that. But that's, so that's our big difference, is that we're really trying to keep on top of our staffing costs and not have to be borrowing from other budget lines to make up the difference when healthcare jumps or anything like that. So, that's our request for the year. Any questions? Susan's going to come up with another.
Gil party.
I have perhaps a silly question.
Sure.
What is the difference between a downloadable audiobook and an ebook?
A downloadable audiobook is an audio, is a recording book. An ebook is where you like read it on your Kindle.
Oh, gotcha. Thank you.
Every day, isn't it?
One's like a PDF and one's an audio file. But they're both downloadable, onto whatever device you prefer.
Right.
They're pretty neck and neck, and your stats are.
They're very cool. That's how I read most of my book group books. Or I put them in the audiobook, and I listen in the car on the way back from Newark.
I do.
Whatever's available.
Well, you know, thank you, Erica. And, you know, we're very happy to have the Tivoli Free Library downstairs in this building. It's a big building that, you know, we couldn't quite fill it by ourselves, just the village government. And there's a lot of life and vitality in this building. And I know that's not because of us. So, thank you so much, and good luck to everyone on Tuesday.
It's a good time for the Tivoli hookers.
Yes. Rug hooking Thursday mornings.
Chip and clear.
Of course, yes. Thank you all for being here.
I hope you have a great day. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, let's see. So, yeah, again, in case you missed it, the, you know, school and the library, the election is Tuesday, May 21st, noon to 9:00. Mill Road Elementary School, 3-5 cafeteria. And we will move on to our regular meeting, the Village Clerk's Report. Clerk Bruno, please.
In the past month, there were two K rolls that were processed. Our deputy clerk has been very busy with workshops and meetings with the planning board. 380 trash tags were sold. Up and coming, the office will be closed on Monday, May 27, in observance of Emory.
Thank you, Clerk Bruno. Trustees, we have two sets of minutes from previous meetings. We have the April 17th regular board meeting minutes. And with some help and review from our attorney, we have the May 8th workshop minutes, in which we did, we did take a motion about rejecting those Pine Street bids and rebidding the project. So, with, you've had a chance to review these minutes, and we'll ask for a motion to approve both sets.
I move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Moving on to the Treasurers' Report. So, we are in the final month of our fiscal year, which is June 1st to May 31st. And we'll still have two more weeks of spending, which show up in what's called Abstract 13, which we deal with in June. But we are very close to the end of the fiscal year. And in the last month, we spent, out of the general fund, $54,112.32. Out of the water fund, $11,233.95. Out of the sewer fund, $2,894.43. cents, for a grand total of sixty-eight thousand, two hundred forty and seventy cents. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Report?
So moved. Second.
That was Cole, followed by Ezraudi. Any discussion? As always, thank you to our fabulous Treasurer, Bonnie Day. She really does a good job, and I work very closely with her in my role as Budget Officer, and it's a pleasure, and she makes it easy for, easier for me than it would be without her, I'll tell you that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's the Treasurer's Report. Is there a motion to pay the bills?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Moving on to a zoning report. Trustee Ezraudi, please.
Our very full and busy code enforcement officer, John Fenton, has issued four building permits and reviewed them the last month. He has done eight building inspections, and had no complaints to inspect, but he has issued four zoning violations for failure to remove garbage cans. We're going to get people going on that.
Yep, it's, there's always a couple.
Okay. Municipal searches, two requested and completed, and no fire inspections scheduled.
Code enforcement officer Fenton and our deputy clerk, Gail, they're working on the fire inspection letters, and identifying every place. Of course, some, some things are every year, some things are every three years, and they're, I know they just finalized the letter, so they'll be going out.
Summer project.
Yep, yep. And I guess these complaints don't capture when the mayor calls him and says, "Go deal with that." Because I know I'll call them this month, so. Thank you, trustee Ezraudi. Public comment on agenda items only, and I just want to let the public know that we are pulling the proposed budget modifications. We're not doing that tonight. That's going to happen at our next meeting. It being so close to the end of the fiscal year, there's a lot to go through, so your budget officer is not quite ready with them all. We have a few budget mods to get entered in and see where, you know, the money's left in each line. So trustees, there's going to be a heap of them next month as we close out the fiscal year and start the new one. Tax warrant and the resolution, we're going to do the cleanup day like we did last year, and then we're going to set a public hearing on some new code regarding property maintenance. So with that brief overview of the agenda, if there's any public comment on those items, we are here to listen. Okay, we're good. There's always, you guys get last licks at the end of the meeting, right? So it's okay. All right, we'll dive right in. Let me get in my binder. So we have the 2019-2020 tax warrant, in which we will authorize the village treasurer, Bonnie Day, to receive and collect from the several persons named in the tax roll here to annex the several sums stated in the last column here of opposite their respective names, being a total of four hundred seventy-seven thousand, one hundred fourteen dollars. Taxes and liens totaling nineteen thousand, sixteen dollars and fifty-nine cents, for a total of four hundred ninety-six thousand, one hundred thirty dollars and fifty-nine cents. Is there a motion to issue the tax warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Ezraudi, followed by Cole. And taxes are due June 30th, is that correct?
July 1st.
Excuse me, July 1st?
July 1st.
Very good. That's why I ask you, because you're going to. With that said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Okay, moving on to the resolution establishing 2019 Village Cleanup Day for Monday, August 12th. I want to thank our small but very effective committee for being present for this big vote. You know, we did this last year, it was such a hit, it was really great. Not only did we get a lot of stuff out of yards and basements and attics and who knows where else, we'll leave it at that. But it was a really, it was one of those times when I really felt that the village government did something that was of use for the villagers. And we try and do that all the time, but sometimes you do better than others, so that was, that was a great one. We have made a couple improvements to last year. We've got the individual prices for tires and mattresses identified, and in further discussion about what the fee would be, we're going to go with thirty-five dollars, which is still a remarkable deal. You just got to get it out to the side of the road, to the curb. You don't have to borrow someone's truck, load the truck, drive it over to the dump, pay their minimum fee. So it's a good deal. And we will be getting some literature out very soon. People can start signing up. We'll do it like we did last year. Everyone's going to register with the clerk. We get your address, we get your fee, and you'll let us know if you have extra items, including tires, mattresses, air conditioners, refrigerators, freezers, washing machines and dryers, paying the extra fees for those. And then on the day when the, when Welsh is coming through, they'll have the list of addresses, boom, 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 boom. So we will get that out to you soon, so you can start signing up. But for now, we just want to set the day and the fee. And again, that's thirty-five dollars for the base for August 12th. It's a Monday, so you have a whole weekend to get your stuff together. And there's also, as last year, going to be an e-waste. We can't pick that up at the curb, you're going to be able to drop it off here in Village Hall, hopefully out in the gazebo, and we are tweaking our hours for that. I think we're going eight to one. So you've got a little time on your way to your nine o'clock start, and you've got lunch hour, and so, or if you can't make any of those, have your buddy or your neighbor bring your stuff in. There's a separate fee scheduled for your alarm clock and VCR and whatever you have there. With all of that, is there a motion to adopt the resolution establishing 2019 Village Cleanup Day for Monday, August 12th?
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, that was Cole, followed by Major. Roll call vote. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. And thank you again for getting that off the ground and running. And we're very anxious to see, you know, the garbage company says, "Well, you know, the first year, you're going to get a lot," and then it tapers off. But our experience in the first year was despite everything we did to try and get the word out, there were still people right down to the day that came, "So why didn't I know about this?" So maybe we're going to get a nice load again this year, we'll see. And if it continues to be successful and useful, then we will keep doing it annually.
We should just keep talking about it.
Yes. Cleanup Day.
Cleanup Day.
When's Cleanup Day?
Gosh, I think it's August.
August 12th.
Okay.
And that's a Monday.
That's a Monday, yeah.
The call and response always gets.
Say it again?
Yeah.
Was it a Monday or a Thursday?
Yes, it was, yeah. We do it on a Monday, so people sort of have the weekend to prepare their items.
Oh, that's why it felt like a Sunday, because you can put it up, stuff out here.
Okay, moving on to our last item on the agenda. Resolution establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption of proposed Local Law B of 2019, a local law providing for the amendment of Chapter 171, property maintenance, amendment of Chapter 191, streets and sidewalks, and repeal of Chapter 92, brush, grass, and weeds. So we have a draft Local Law B, which will be available at the clerk's office or on the website. This is an attempt to continue to fine-tune and improve our code to address property maintenance issues. We've had different code sections in the past, you know, brushes and weeds are over here, the rest of property maintenance is over here. We're trying to sort of streamline, clean that up, and make it effective. So this resolution is just to set a public hearing for our next workshop, which will be 7:00 PM on June 12th, is that correct? Yes. So public hearing, June 12th, 7:00 PM, here in this room, on this draft law. Trustees, is there a motion to set this public hearing for June 12th, 7:00 PM? Deputy Mayor is, has moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, if we get a chance to actually look at this draft law, it, there's been, it's been a long time coming. It has, I think, resolved a lot of frustrations with the existing law. And the purpose is to really make clear expectations with regard to particularly deplorable debris outside the home, to, to, that people have to get rid of.
Also, there's good definitions.
Great definitions.
And is that really good word there? It's not, is it putrescent?
Oh, yes.
Putrescent?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good word.
I also am glad that we have refined a good definition, making the distinction between jumped vehicle and unregistered vehicle, because under New York State law, you're entitled to one unregistered vehicle at your property. But we all know there's a big difference between, you know, I'm getting paid Friday, I'm going to get my registration Monday, and this thing is going to drive out on the road, and the tree, the tree growing through the windshield and the car sunk a foot in the earth, right? I mean, that, don't tell me that's the unregistered vehicle anymore, because that is now the jumped vehicle. That's a very useful distinction that we haven't had before, so. Well, with that discussion, I hope people will take advantage of the public hearing on June 12th, and we'll do a roll call vote to set it. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Aye.
Trustee Cole.
Aye.
Trustee Ezraudi.
Aye.
And I also vote aye. Public hearing, property maintenance law, June 12th, 7:00 PM. The next board meeting will be held Wednesday, June 19th, at 7:00 PM, preceded by a workshop at 6:00 PM, here at the historic Los De Poyster Hall, and we have our regular workshop, June 12th, at 7:00. And trustees, you know, we usually do our workshops in the mayor's office, we'll start here with that public hearing, and then adjourn to do our heavy lifting and nuts and bolts stuff afterwards. Moving on to committee reports, trustee Ezraudi.
Okay, I'm going to start out with the water report, my favorite report. We actually used the Ballot well on two days in the month of April. We haven't used it in ten months. I don't know. I have no idea. The McKnight well has been pumping at two thousand gallons a day for the entire month. The 2Pw well has been pumping at about the same rate, except for two days during the month. And the 5Pw well has been pumping at about eleven thousand gallons a day for all but about seven days. The 4PE and 10PE, you know what the PE wells are?
Poty.
Poty, so this, okay. Have been pumping at about eighteen thousand gallons a day. They and the Woodmark wells are our best producing wells, and they have heavy going sometimes. And the Woodmark wells have been pumping at a much higher capacity. Do we know why that is? I don't know. But almost twenty-eight thousand gallons.
Got work.
And, yeah, yeah. So that's good, which has kept the water tower at its optimal level of between a hundred and sixty-two feet and a hundred and sixty-eight feet. Now, you mentioned rain. Do I have any estimates?
Sixty inches.
In the month of April.
Yes.
That's a little high.
Say six and a half.
Ten.
Four and a half.
Oh.
Not as bad as you thought, right? And the good news is that we only had one day over an inch, and that was the 27th. So it's a recent experience. The water quality met all tests. It was tested at six locations, and mains were flushed on April 16th and 18th, and a pump and motor were replaced in the 2PE well in mid-March. And Jimmy came by my house and read the meter for the last time, and introduced me to Les from Dutchess County Waste Water Authority, who will be doing it going for ten more.
And Les is meeting a lot of dogs in the neighborhood, everyone that generates.
So please say hello and give me my greetings for a jump on time.
Thank you, trustee Ezraudi. Trustee Schneider cannot be with us tonight, so I'll read the Tivoli Village Court Charge Welling Summary Report. This is from April 1st to April 30th. Total charges received, six. Total charges disposed, twenty-eight. Total fines collected and remitted to the state controller in fines, eighteen hundred forty. Surcharges, nine hundred and one, for a total of two thousand, seven hundred and forty-one I'd like to turn it over to trustee Cole.
Tivoli, trustee Cole. For, what's coming?
Any of your reports and announcements you'd like to present?
All right. For Veterans Affairs, please join us on Memorial Day, Monday, May 27th, at 10:00 AM at Monument Hill, for the observance of Memorial Day, honoring those who serve and remembering those who, of course, have paid the ultimate sacrifice. We would love as many people to join for that as good. Also, just a note, the Zoning Review Committee will start meetings again on Wednesday, June 5th, at seven o'clock here in the Village Hall, and that will be on the village calendar. Also, beginning in June, I've been asked to meet with our Tivoli Merchants and Arts Association, to hear from our local business owners about ideas for economic development and the business district. So excited about all that.
Great. Thank you, trustee Cole. And some of the things that the Zoning Review Committee will be working on, major, minor site plans, so, you know, maybe you need a site plan for a small thing, maybe you're building an entire building. And so we've never had a tiered thing, and it's seemed, there have been moments when it's a bit onerous for those two actions to have the same fee level and the same level of review. So we're going to stratify them and try and have, you know, a little more flexibility and more sort of good service to the applicant based on what their project is. And what else do we have? Other exciting ones like?
Oh, yes, short-term rentals. We will be talking about, we have some language drafted, have been working on this for a few months around the issue of short-term rentals, where we understand that about fifty-four percent of the platform for short-term rentals is Airbnb. There are over a hundred platforms which you can do this through, so just clarifying the language and the code around short-term rentals within the village.
Great, thank you. And that's a citizen committee that, you know, works up sort of recommendations, and then eventually presents them to the village board to work into code and law. And they're open meetings, the public's welcome. The public sort of doesn't get to talk during the meeting, they can observe the whole thing, and, you know, after the meeting, it's sort of up to the committee if they want to take anything. But, you know, it's really a sort of early laboratory for some issues that work their way up.
And then the next step after that would be a public forum, which we would encourage everyone to come and engage and express their ideas around the language and the resolution and that sort of thing. And then we would take all of that into account, go back, and make recommendations to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, thank you, trustee Cole. Deputy Mayor, Major.
Well, we're all coming out of our winter torpor, and events are just picking up lots of stuff at the library. The Battle of the Books Program, the Summer Reading Program, is gearing up again, so there's going to be an informational meeting about that on the 17th at 4:00 PM. This weekend is the Community Shred Day, which is so great. There'll be a truck out of the parking here, and this is a joint venture between the village board and the Tivoli Library, so there's a truck you can bring up to three banker's boxes full of, you know, old bills and receipts and love letters and anything you want to get rid of, and make sure it's gone for good, right down there. And that's from 10:00 to 2:00. There's also going to be a plant swap put on by the library as well. Some of the library's doing it, I'm very excited about it. It's Celebrate Chocolate Chip, Celebrate Chocolate Chip Day, and that's on Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, from 3:00 to 6:00.
Celebrate Chocolate Chip Day.
Celebrate Chocolate Chips, yeah. Not celebrate chocolate chips, you're not going to be flinging them around. But you're invited to enter a, enter a baked good or confection, and this will be a contest, so.
And it is required to have chocolate chips in it?
And it's required to have chocolate chips in it?
Yeah, no carrot. You can just leave that at home.
Okay.
This is the real stuff.
This is the real deal.
Chocolate chunks or chocolate chips?
This is Celebrate Chocolate Chip Day. You're gonna have to look into Chocolate Chunk Day.
It's now so strange. My mother did do that to me as a child. She replaced chocolate with carrot.
My mother did one.
And she replaced, I don't know, she put in, wheat germ and, you know, it was, it was, it was slightly tremendous. So I figure that Chocolate Chip Day is.
Yes, we're gonna keep this one clean. Uh, but also, there's the standard fabulous things at the library, and if you go to tivolilibrary.org, you can find out more about the scheduling of, for example, chess club, homework club, tarot club, Storytime with Miss Penny, uh, how to get, uh, free passes to Olana, and also when you can come and read to a dog. Clermont?
You're just full of interesting things.
Right? All you have to do is go online, and it's all right there. Clermont, uh, state historic site, our neighbor to the north, uh, is gonna be starting up their Harmony's Old Hudson Outdoor Concert Series on Thursday, May 30th. It's at 6:00 p.m. It's free, and this is an ongoing thing throughout the summer. It's really nice to take a picnic and be up at Clermont and, uh, listen to a little music, and enjoy the place. And there's a talk this Saturday. This Saturday is so full. You can go to the shred day, you can go to a plant swap, and then go up to Clermont, because there is, um, a lecture entitled powdered, no, shirts powdered red, colon, Dutch, I'm not even gonna try it, but it means Iroquois trade in the 17th and 18th centuries, and, uh, this just, it looks so fascinating. It's a talk by, it's talking about, um, clothing and what it means back then, and it's being put on by, um, Maeve Kane, an assistant professor of history at SUNY Albany. So it's 4 o'clock, and it's free, but you should register online at the Clermont website. Montgomery Place is knocking it out of the park. There are so many awesome things going on right now. Um, there is, wow, okay, another thing for Saturday. So, okay.
Okay.
Shred Day, Plant Swap, run down to Montgomery Place for 3 o'clock. A lecture on music in the Gilded Age. This is gonna be amazing. Um, and then, I believe it's next weekend, there's a concert there as well, but, so, the big thing that Montgomery Place, Bard and Historic Redhook have put together, uh, an exhibit, it's, we're calling it Gilson Fest, and this is, uh, it's named for Alexander Gilson, who, was born sometime between 1818 and 1824, and he, his mother, he was born a slave at Montgomery Place. His mother worked for Janet Montgomery, and, uh, as, and his father was, uh, her butler. And, um, 1827 comes around, and, and, uh, all the slaves are free, and it had been a rolling process beginning in, in 1800. But Alexander Gilson stayed on at Montgomery Place as an employee, and he became a, the head gardener, and he was quite renowned throughout the Hudson Valley. And, and farther afield, there's actually, um, there's a begonia that was named after him, and, um, it's, it's kind of remarkable. So there's a lot of, the, there's, um, an exhibition at Historic Redhook that's called, uh, Alexander Gilson, From Property to Property Owner, and it's.
And what date is that?
Uh, it opens on Friday, May 24th at 11:30, and so, um, Professor Armstead at Bard had a class where, um, and they did a bunch of research and put together, uh, a whole bunch of material, so that's gonna be at the, um, Five Cherry Street Annex behind the Elmandorf Inn. Uh, also, there's a horticulture exhibit tied in with that, also in that space, and the Redhook Quilters Group has made a commemorative quilt, celebrating this story. So, that's pretty powerful. Um, and that exhibit's gonna be up all summer, but, um, I would say come and check it out.
It's neat.
It's, it's sort of, it's, we talk a lot about, um, the, the 1% history in the Hudson Valley, right? Like, there's all the big houses up and down the river, and, there's a lot more to it, so it's great to be getting it out there and checking it out. So, also, there's a, a exhibit of, um, there's a garden party exhibit at Montgomery Place on Friday, May 24th as well, so, you can go check out, uh, the Gilson exhibit, and then head over to Montgomery Place, and there's, um, a landscape ornament exhibit as well, so you're gonna see, sort of, um, Gilson's contributions, and then, um, be able to put it in context in the landscape. And Historic Redhook, June 8th, we're having what's called.
Exciting news, yeah.
This is exciting. This is, we're having what's called, uh, History Happening, because it is a happening, and history is happening all the time. We are all making it, and, um, so this is, uh, it's a, it's an expansion of the annual Preservation Exposition. And so there are gonna be, uh, this is, it's food, it's music, it's, um, you know, both fire departments, Redhook and Tivoli, are celebrating 100 years, so they're gonna have some fire trucks there, and there's gonna be, uh, the unveiling, oh, and also, um, preservation experts, right? So if you have questions about your home, if you have questions about, um, timber framing, historic landscapes, plasterwork.
And picture windows.
Have picture windows. Just come and bring your questions, and there are people who can help you, and, um, the really, oh, uh, and the really big thing is unveiling the Elmandorf Green Campus, right? So, um, Historic Redhook acquired the property just to the, on Cherry Street, and, um, so what had been the Elmandorf parking lot is now a green space, and, and so we have a campus, and so the Elmandorf is still as awesome.
Transforming.
Oh, totally, changing the whole deal. So the Elmandorf is still available to do all the awesome Elmandorphy things, right? The archives are in there, it's available for public space, meetings, parties, and then KZE is in the Carriage House, and now we have this awesome building that we're calling, um, the Story Studio, and it's, you know, the Gilson Fest exhibit is in there, and it'll be available for exhibits, but also, eventually we'll be getting it out for, um, sort of recording history, you know, sort of doing things like, you know, Story Core type projects, but also, you can come and you can, you know, scan your family ephemera. Just, eh, create, creating history, creating a record, uh, for context. And finally, uh, as of yesterday, we're still in our dock in the Tivoli Bays, but the plans are moving forward. So maybe, maybe we'll have something this summer, and, uh, the ticks are out, not just the small ones, but, uh, I observed today, also the big ones, so.
The wood ticks.
The wood ticks, yes.
I've already experienced one.
Yeah, yeah.
One more, one more question, if, uh, if I may. How was the community pollock?
Oh, community pollock was fantastic. We had about 50 people. Um, this was, what, the third year?
Last Friday?
Last Friday night, um, upstairs on the third floor.
Great.
Trustee Cole?
It was fun. There were a lot of people there. We had entertainment, uh, live music from some of the Bard students, and, uh, it was just a lot of fun. Very well attended.
Yep, so students brought, um, photo, their photo projects, so we had some, some student art display, and, uh, yeah, it was a lot of fun.
How many of these pollocks have Tivoli and Bard done together now? Three?
No, more than that. I think we've done, yeah, I'd say five or six, five or six, maybe? Yeah, and, you know, I think the smallest one was about 30 people, and the biggest was probably 80.
And you, now that you've done a number, and they're always on Fridays when I can't go, but that's okay.
It's well planned.
I just wanna go to one sometime, but, um, do you notice any difference between sort of like a fall semester, spring semester, winter, like, in terms of who shows up, or how useful you feel they are, or students, you know? Because part of what we're trying to do here is, is, you know, literally break bread and rub elbows between students and non-students and campus dwellers and village dwellers, so.
This one was really heavy on, um, campus residents, uh, which I think is great. The Center for Civic Engagement is really a great partner for this, in terms of getting the word out.
Really, really interesting.
Yeah, um, I think in the fall, they seem to be bigger, and maybe more, I, I think that, that either way, it's effective, but I think in the fall, um, you know, you have a bunch of new people moving in.
Get acquainted.
Things get a little crazy.
Yeah.
And then, there's a lot of incentive for residents to come, like, long-term residents to come, and show their faces, and everybody can, you know, um, sort of, uh, come to an understanding, and you, before the dark days of winter come, when, when, you know, we need each other for shoveling and, you know,
Right.
jump-starting cars, and, you know, it's better for all, get along.
Wonderful. I'm so glad it was another success, and I, I hope that we all keep doing them. Well, I had a Saturday event to tell you about, but you've also gotta, you know, shred your paper, swap your plans, hit Clermont. But here also, uh, at Village Hall, from, uh, 10:00 a.m. till 2:00 a.m., it's kind of in two parts. There's a 10.
2:00 p.m.
There's a, yeah, there's a 10:00 a.m. to noon part. This is our community composting, uh, event. So Tivoli was part of a grant, uh, we got $1,000 as part of a multi-state community composting grant, and that grant's gonna cover a few things. One of them is bringing, uh, Athena Lee Bradley, who is our composting expert from, uh, she lives in Vermont, she's been coming to Tivoli to get ready for this. Will be on the third floor, so it's gonna be a two-hour workshop and presentation on good composting practices. Um, and then, the, the grant is also covering a, um, large, uh, the brand is Jura, it's Swedish-made tumbler, sort of a locked, uh, you know, bin-type, type, uh, composter. So at noon, after we've all learned about it, we're gonna go with Athena Lee Bradley over to the community garden and build this thing.
Install it.
Install it. Um, she's also gonna advise our garden group a bit on the current composting we've got going there, improving our containers a little bit, and, um, so that'll be going on here at Village Hall, 10 to 2 for the, sort of, the, uh, classroom portion, and then, excuse me, 10 to noon for the classroom portion, noon to 2 for the roll up your sleeves and, um, and help us work outside in the field. In addition to everything else happening.
You can still make it to Montgomery Place after that.
Perfect. Uh, also, yes, trustee Cole mentioned Memorial Day. Uh, I'm very honored, uh, to be asked to speak at that every year by the Harris Smith Post, and I will be there with a few, um, you know, modest words, um, to help with that ceremony, so I do hope that you'll come out. Uh, we have some very important road closures happening tomorrow, um, so this might be too late for the viewers on Panda, but, um, you'll have noticed we've been doing some water line replacement over in front of St. Sylvia's there. Uh, that just got buttoned up. Uh, they're still gonna do a little sidewalk work, but the road is open both lanes now. Uh, and we have to come back in front of, um, Faroe Avenue, where Faroe, uh, enters, um, actually, where you enter Faroe from Broadway, in front of the, uh, Troghaven Pub there. We had done most of that work last winter, but as winter came, we hadn't gotten the concrete in, and the concrete is one we really have to meet the county's standards, so we had just sort of closed it up for the winter, and now we have to open it up, do the concrete, because there's concrete under the asphalt all along Broadway, new rebar and whatnot. So, in order to make that take as little time as possible, we're actually gonna completely close the roads to traffic starting tomorrow morning, that's, uh, Thursday, the 16th. So we're lucky enough to have Pine Street, uh, everyone can detour around that. The trickiest bit is that the residents of Faroe are gonna have to enter and exit from Montgomery Street. So, uh, we hope that's gonna happen very quickly and not take too long. But road closures tomorrow, Faroe is really gonna be difficult, and, uh, all of Broadway will be, can't drive through. So I've communicated with the county, with the college, and, um, we'll just bear with it together and get that water line in there, uh, closed up. Um, as trustee Ezraati mentioned, um, Jimmy did his last readings, um, the Dutchess County Water and Waste Water Authority is set to, um, begin operation and maintenance of our water and sewer systems July 1st. Uh, we're still, all parties are still on target for that date. So, um, with the quarterly billing being June 1 and September 1, June 1 is the last one that the village will be doing. Uh, that's Jimmy, that's Robin, and, um, the September 1 is gonna come from the DCWWA, and you're gonna be paying them, not us, but again, the system, the costs, the amenity, it really belongs to the users, which is all of us, and, you know, it's ultimately about, is the village managing this and running this amenity, or is the authority? So, um, we've been doing this for, well, about five years now, approaching this date, and it's finally at hand. Another little wrinkle of that is that your, uh, quarterly newsletter, which I know everyone tears open that envelope and reads as soon as they get their bill, will not be coming that way anymore. So, um, I will still be writing them. Uh, I still think it's one of the most important ways to know what the village is up to, what's happened and what's coming. Uh, but we are gonna move that entirely into a digital, um, arrangement. So there'll be one June 1st, and my expectation is that by September, that's gonna be an emailed, um, electronic, uh, thing. So, uh, you know, there'll be other changes, you'll be seeing different personnel, um, after July 1st, as Susan indicated, reading the meters, doing the maintenance, all that kind of thing, but this moment that we, village government and residents have been working towards for so many years is, is, we're there, uh, June 1, so. In other news, as you all know, it's been very wet, and while maybe we didn't get to 60 inches, it's been wet out there, and I'm sure as you're looking at your own grass, wondering when am I ever gonna get to mow it? I mean, from where I sit and Superintendent Simmons sits, this has been a very frustrating time. Uh, we have a heap of, you know, April comes, May comes, we're ready to tear into all sorts of projects, and we are really, we've been hampered. So, things like mulching in the park, all the mowing and all the village properties, we've got a lot of outdoor work, you know, we filled some potholes today, but we're aware that due to wet conditions, we may have to refill them sooner rather, you know, than we thought, but we had to get them filled, so. That's all to say that we're stuck with this weather, and, you know, we're eager to get things fixed, but if the village is looking a little furry, uh, some of our mowing, it's the same stuff you're all dealing with, so. Please bear with us, and, you know, as soon as this wetness ends, if it ever does, you know, we're gonna get the park ship shape, and, you know, Monument Hill for Memorial Day and, and everything we usually do, but I just, you know, it's been very frustrating. Jimmy and I meet every day and say, we look at our lists, and it gets longer, and it's not getting shorter, because almost everything is weather-dependent.
But hey, have you seen the daffodils?
The daffodils and the blossoms. The blossoms last for a lot longer in this gray weather. It was a beautiful, um, spring out Broadway for sure. Thank you for helping me find the silver lining. Uh, we've got another big construction project, um, coming along further in the summer, that's the Pine Street Phase 2 with the sidewalk and a bio swale, uh, some utility pole moving. The main thing is new sidewalk on the south side of Pine Street. We have, uh, we're rebidding that. Uh, we weren't thrilled with the prices we got and a few other items, aspects of that process, so we rejected all the bids. We're gonna bid it again, that's going out, so.
With a few more options.
Few more options. We sliced the base bid into more pieces, so we have greater flexibility to say, well, maybe we can move the hydrant in-house and not have it be part of what the contractor does, similar with, there are four very funky and furry trees, uh, which are gonna come out, but again, that's the kind of thing that we could do in-house. If the bids come in too high, we'll have to kind of take that out. So with the rebidding, I imagine that that construction's probably not gonna start till late June, July, somewhere in midsummer. But we look forward to doing that. The, uh, changes in Pine Street over the last half-decade are really, uh, significant and, uh, much improved. Again, looking ahead to August, um, as I've said a few times, we're not gonna have Tivoli Community Day as we have the last four years. We're gonna take a year off, because the big party that we're all gonna be at in August is the double centennial of the Tivoli and Reddick Fire Companies. Uh, that's the weekend of August 17th, in the village of Reddick, uh, so when hopefully our younger residents are screaming for their Community Day, we can all tell them, the party's over here, and, um, you know, those nice people who spray you at Community Day every year, you should come and, and celebrate their centennial, so.
And really, every day is Community Day.
Yes, well said, too true. Also, uh, speaking of summer and, um, August, we have the Tivoli Rec Program Summer Camp is ready to go. I wanna thank one of our Citizen Award winners, R.A. Speesberg. I wanna thank one of our Citizen Award winners, R.A. Speesberger, for his work on getting this up and running again. The dates will be August 5th through 9th and 12th through 16th. Our day is running from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. It's gonna be taking place in Memorial Park. Children ages 5 to 12 are welcome to register. Applications are accepted now through July 5th or until capacity is reached. And I believe our capacity is about 48. Last year, we had about 41 or so children, so we may well get there. Applications are available at tivoli.ny.org or at the village clerk's office. It's a fee of $25 per week for the first child. Siblings are an additional 15 for Tivoli residents. And if you're a non-resident, those fees are 35 per week per child and 25 for a sibling. So it's really been great the last two years. We're thrilled to have this going and we welcome everyone to register and show our youngest Tivolians, you know, let them have the fun they deserve in this wonderful little village growing up. So I, when I did this the summer of 1985 or '86, I mean, that was the best summer. It's when I made all my friends and sort of like, okay, leaving the house and not just playing with my brothers, so. Tivoli Rec Program signups are ready to go. I just wanna remind everyone that the village of Tivoli is served by the Dutchess County Sheriff's deputies. And that if you ever have any issue, if you're disturbed late at night by noise or any other thing that affects your quality of life here in the village, that's who you call. I know it's confusing, there are a number of other, you know, troopers in the village of Reddick PD. But we work with the deputies, their number is 486-3800. Obviously, if it's an urgent life-threatening thing, it's 911 and they'll send you whoever's closest. But if it's, you know, anything else, that's who you call, that's their number. And I think that's about all I have. Any other discussion from the board? Public comment is open, round two, Les Lex? Okay.
When do we get on the skate ramp, Joe?
Skate ramp, yes. You know, I've found some young skaters skating on that. And boy, is it frustrating to have to say, what can you not read about this? It's closed. We just started repairs today. It's probably gonna take us another week, week and a half. Clerk Bruno has been fabulous helping me get, not just meet procurement, but actually get the stuff here. We ended up ordering the skate-like material from Montana. It's actually pretty tricky stuff to get a hold of. So thank you for your help with that, Robin. We did some demo today and it should be, you know, as soon as we can get it open. You know, the ramp's been there about five years, I think. And we got some great deuce out of it. So we're investing, you know, the total, it's about $1,800 we're gonna put into it to hopefully get another five years if we can. I've had some great volunteers, former skateboarders, who are doing the work. And that's a perfect example of something that was gonna happen three or four weeks ago and then the weather just got ridiculous, so we're closed. So there's another side to Shred Day, is where you're going with that.
Exactly.
All right, with that, bad fun, I think. Motion to adjourn?
I love.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. It is 8:17. Thank you all very much for being here. Have a great week.